North Middleton unsafe and is the structure at 13102 Metropolitan unsafe?
In this case, we've got it as a separate item, so this would be just 820 right now.
Okay.
But as, as far as the resolution, that's what we're saying, modify the resolution. We would be finding it as unsafe structure and blight, but we could then, that's why we want to give that a little extra couple of dates on the 26th meeting. We could come back if he has the reports that show that the, the structure is solid, can be, and with some kind of plan to move forward with doing something with that building and get rid of the blight.
That's correct, yeah. What, what I'd be worried about is trying to tie both the dates for the reports and the written proposal on the same day. If we, if you want to ensure that this keeps moving forward, I don't know that that gives him enough time to, to create a written proposal that's going to satisfy everybody, which is why I was recommend, which is why I was trying to work in that second date somehow.
Gotcha.
Excuse me, even when I started out, I said that it would take a month and a half to come up with that. I've got a plan on what need, what I think needs to happen there, but from the plan stage to the actual stage takes a long time and to do it right. And if that thing's done right, and that kind of money spent, it needs to be done in a way that's financially advantageous to people.
I would say this from a-
And to the beauty of the city and what's good for you guys is good for me.
Well, basically from a council standpoint is we've been sitting with this happening and all these things could have been taking place.
But-
So we need to start a timer and says, this is now, we started the time.
We understand that, we understand that, we kind of agreed to that and we, and we sit here and you, and I've heard you say nothing was done and there's a new roof put on the front, structure was pulled off, you, uh, the back structure, because I knew that would be a failure, started being pulled off by me by myself. So I think if that isn't progress, I think you're missing a few things here. And, and, and you know, so I, I think that if we got a deal, we need to put it down and go for it.
Okay, so we need to back to the resolution. Um, I think we need to go ahead and pass the condemnation resolution. The question is the additional potential clauses that we want to put in there that gives him an ability to basically, for us to rescind this if he provides us with the details we need and then we are comfortable with. So, Mr. Attorney. What would you suggest we add that language wise and to accomplish that, those specific items?
I think rescinding the determination, I think that that is going to make it more difficult than it needs to be.
Okay.
Rather than having language allowing this council to back out of the determination, I think it was, it would be more efficient to tie the work on the property to a written proposal. Along those lines, you would set a deadline for the written repo, the written proposal and from there, um, whether or not the owner is diligently following that proposal is, can, can be dealt with outside of the city council meetings essentially. The written proposal would have to be approved by the city and then the city would have the option to determine whether the proposal is being followed.
Okay, so with the current resolution, finding that we have an issue with a structure that's, uh, you know, in blight condition, we would pass this, but do we need to add any stipulation language in there that he can, within a certain length of time, present evidence to the contrary to the city?
I think-
That's already in there, isn't it?
I don't know.
We can always rescind.
Well, I think that's, to that point, there's nothing that prevents Mr. Tyner from presenting some additional information between now and the 23rd that would contradict anything as far as, I mean, that's part of why this hearing was scheduled was to prevent, present that information that would find that the building was in fact fit. Uh, we, we don't have that report this evening, but between now and, and the 23rd, I'm, I'm going to say the 26th, is that the council meeting, 26th? That I, you, that could be brought up at that meeting again, if you wanted to rescind that, if there was something done, but I guess I'm just saying, do you need to have all that discussion?
We could rescind, we could rescind the resolution without it being specific language in there that says-
Correct. What I worry about is, is getting, is the council getting into a position where they've, where evidence is presented and they want to rescind and you want to rescind this resolution, um, but then there's some plan that's not being followed, um, that would require an entire reset. Um, it can be rescinded at any time.
Without having specific language in there for it, so.
Correct.
So you could, you could have got until the 26th to produce whatever you'd like to produce and in fact, um, that would be contrary to the building being unfit and a dangerous structure and you have until the 26th to do that. That's the resolution, I think, as Mr. Tyner pointed out, you have that opportunity. Um, again, that opportunity was what tonight was meant to do, uh, is to allow for that hearing. So I mean, part of it again goes back to if you feel compelled one way or another that this building is either unfit or fit, um, that's the decision you're making tonight. And-
Would we be smart to still change the date to the 27th from the 23rd for that, pulling that permit, demolition permit? Does that cause any problem at all legalized?
Not at all.
That way, if we change it to the 27th, if he comes to the 26th meeting and presents evidence and we want to rescind it, at least he's not been put in a bind where he had to go pull the permit. But if he doesn't present an evidence that sways the council on the 26th of June, he's got to pull that permit on the 27th then. Or the resolution would still be in force and he has to pull it. That be accurate?
That would be accurate. Maybe an easier way to do it, um, would be not having the review date in the resolution.
No, no rev, review date, just the 23rd date when he had to pull the demolition permit. We could change that to the 27th.
Yes.
So would someone like to make that motion? That's Ms. Bright here and give us the-
I make a motion to move forward with resolution 2023 dash oh seven, changing the date to June 27th in section four. Is that good or no?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mrs. Long and a second by Mr. Shannon. Uh, is there any further discussion by anyone? Any questions, concerns, comments? And you understand what, what we just did, right?
I think so.
Okay, if not, staff will be more than happy to explain to you. Uh, with that then, roll call.
Voting on a resolution, voting on a motion to adopt resolution 2023 dash oh seven with the amendment of the date from June 23rd, changing that to June 27th. Kip?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, on to item number two. Public hearing and condemnation resolution for 13103 Metropolitan. I will entertain a motion to open the hearing. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Shannon, a second by Ms. Long. Open hearing, all those in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, who would like staff? Who'd like to make the presentation on 13101 Metropolitan?
Um, Hale Warek, on behalf of the city attorney's office, I would recommend that the council make a motion amending the date from June 23rd, 2023 to June 27th, 2023 and pass resolution 2023 dash zero zero eight.
Is that it for staff? Mr. Tyner, would you like to comment at all on this?
I'll get inspected and we'll go from there.
Anybody from the public? I don't know if I should take that, if you want to speak. Seeing nobody from, no, the citizens want to say anything, uh, we'll go ahead and I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh yes, I'm sorry.
Oh, is that right?
Of your friend. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Uh, let's see, Mr. Reeves did raise his finger, though he didn't say it, so. We have a motion by Ms. Long and a second by Mr. Reeves. Um, all those in favor of closing the meeting? Say aye. Anybody opposed? And with that then, uh, I will entertain a motion for a religion, resolution.
Could I just clarify, so-
Sure.
What we're talking about now is the backside of the same property, so there was formerly some, um, structures there, duplex, I think is what it formerly was. Are you intending to do the same structural review guy as you're, you're talking about? Is this building savable, are these buildings on the back, you feel? I just want to make sure we're, we're talking about two different properties.
Right.
Uh, they're similar, uh, in terms of their location, but this is a, um, they're different, different buildings, so.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
So the resolution is going to be to adopt, a motion to adopt resolution 2023 dash oh eight, amending the June 23rd date to be to be to June 27th.
Yes.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Shannon, second by Ms. Long. Um, anybody would like to com, ask questions or comments on this one? Go ahead, Mr. Reeves.
The only thing I'd, the only thing I'd say is I've, I've noticed there that the, as part of the blight on that property that there is, the gutters are growing over. Is that possible? That could be cleaned up so it even looks a little better. Mr. Tyner? That's just one of the items, but I just-
I was going to say, Mr. Tyner, if you want to speak, you might have to come to the mic.
As part of the appearance of blight, I just thought that was one thing that really looks bad. That's all.
Ms. Long? Mr. Reeves? Might ask staff a quick question. Since that is one lot, correct? Is that conforming that you could have a duplex? So that building, in theory, the city would never authorize that building to be lived in?
You'd have to go through a rezoning process?
They'd have to go through a rezoning process to-
Flat or a lot split or something like that to divide the property, yeah?
That's what I thought. So, question is, are you even going to, that's going to take some time to even do that, so.
I thought that was-
Once a building sits vacant for a period of time, if, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Lee, six months, um, if, if it sits vacant for six months and is disconnected from all services, it no longer can be used, uh, it can revert to an old zoning. It has to now be, if it comes back up, it has to be based upon the current zoning. Is that correct?
I've got a question.
Go forward.
Is not that area, what, R2, it could be?
I'd have to double check, but I think it's all just single family, I think it's R1, single family residential.
What I'm, was thinking is, because I lived down on Lakewood Road, okay? And I'm on one side of the street, but I'm pretty sure the other side of the street was R2 when we moved in there. And that would, might include that property on up on the hill up there.
I'd have to check.
Okay.
Well, staff will have a little bit of time for the meeting, so. Any other questions, concerns? With that, I'll call, roll.
Wood?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, on to item number three. Presentation and acceptance of the 2022 audit.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Tilly LaPlante, Finance Director. I have Sean Gordon here with Gordon CPA and he's here to present the 2022 audit.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Sean Gordon with Gordon CPA. Um, we performed the 2022 audit of the city, so I'll go through that, um, copy of the audit report that you've seen, uh, in the agenda packet or you might have in front of you. Uh, we'll start with pages one and two. This is called the Independent Auditor's Report. Um, the opinion paragraph, um, is presented on page one. The third paragraph down, you'll see some italicized heading called Unmodified Opinion on the Regulatory Basis of Accounting. Uh, this paragraph states that the highest and cleanest opinion we could give the city's financial statements, we did give the city's financial statements for the year ended 1231 2022. Uh, so that reflects very well on the financial and internal control management of the city during that time period. Further down on, in this section, we discuss management and the council's responsibilities for the financial statements of the city and then more of our responsibilities as well. Uh, flipping forward to page three, this is called the Summary Statement of Receipts, Expenditures and Unencumbered Ending Cash. Here you'll see in the left-hand column, all of the different funds of the city and then, uh, beginning cash, receipts, expenditures and ending cash. The very bottom of that right-hand column, you'll see total cash on hand at 1231 2022 of almost $21 million. Um, this is a about three and a half million dollar increase over the prior year, so again, that reflects very well on the financial and budget management of the city and the city staff. Uh, flipping forward, uh, to the next section, it starts on page four and runs through page 11. These are called the Notes to the Financial Statements. Uh, we discuss quite a bit of information here, including, um, different accounting policies of the city, uh, long-term debt information, uh, involvement in the CAPERS and KPNF retirement program, among many other disclosures. Um, I did want to point out on page, um, 11, there's two statutory violations that were noted there. One had to do with a fund that, um, spent more cash than it had and the other one had to do with a budget violation, uh, that we noted. Um, and then the final section forward is, uh, starts on page 12 and runs through page 49. Um, and these are just more detailed breakouts of those funds that are presented on page four, so you'll see more, um, detail on the receipts and the expenditures of each of those funds and you'll also see a comparison to how each fund, um, performed compared to the budget that was adopted for the 2022, uh, year. Um, and then I wanted to communicate that we didn't have any auditor recommendations to communicate to the, to the mayor and council this year. So again, that reflects very well on the statutory and internal control and financial management of the city during that time period. Um, and then last thing I wanted to let you guys know is we had a great audit this year, so Tilly and, and her staff and everybody involved in the audit, uh, did a good job of getting us, uh, requests, um, items that were requested and, and was very responsive to everything that we needed, so we do appreciate that. Uh, with that, does anybody have any questions for me?
Go ahead and start right here with Ms. Wood. Well, I guess we, we'll close, well, hold on, we got to do this. Uh, is there anybody from the public that wish to address? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept the 2022 audit.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Reeves and a second by Mr. Shannon. Now we'll go to discussion, Mrs. Wood.
I really want to thank Christina for helping me understand it. Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Reeves?
Yeah, kudos to Tilly and everybody that works for her on this. This is a monumental project to do this and she always does a good job.
Mr. Shannon?
Thanks, Tilly.
Uh, just, I'll add just that, uh, yes, the staff does a wonderful job. We love to see these kind of reports. Uh, just ask real quickly on those two, uh, on note 10 for the statutory violations, were either of those anything that was a serious violation and just, and they're easily correctable, that's good to hear.
Correct.
My, my accountant always said it's okay to make an error too, that way they always find something. They don't find the bigger stuff, so. Thank you very much. And with that, vote please.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. On to item number four, special use permit for 11845 Quad Drive. Staff?
Good evening, Mark Lee, Community Development Director. We're here this evening to, um, look at a special use permit that was requested and approved at the, or recommended for approval at the planning commission meeting last month. This is to allow the owner of 11845, 11845 Quad Drive to maintain and possess and keep on the lot some storage containers that, that, um, I believe showed up from a contractor that he's renting some space to. When Mr. Walters first came in, that is the applicant, when he first came in, we began discussions about a project that he would like to do and we were, we were headed down a road of a unique special use permit status to move it forward to see if it would, if it would work. Uh, initially, he wanted to have storage containers at individual spots that a contractor could rent, park a vehicle next to it, keep their tools and equipment in those, move that storage container out if they had a job, so on and so forth like that. Um, he kind of wavered away from that idea as we started moving through the process and then we came through and he got his site plan approved for his storage facility and lo and behold, some storage containers showed up. Uh, I'm not going to say they were completely out of Mr. Walters' control, but there again, we had had some discussions about how they weren't allowed and how we'd have to proceed moving forward. Um, and that is here, we are where we are today. Uh, we're here to, I guess more or less request if special use can be permit, permitted to, to maintain with the stipulations and staff put in place to have those storage containers on his lot.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. This was a, uh, public hearing was held at the, um, planning commission, so won't be any public input on this item. So I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance approving the request special use permit for 11845 Quad Drive dash SUP 0423.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Reeves and a second by Mr. Kip. Um, and we'll start down here with you, Mr. Reeves? I'm sorry, Mr. Shannon?
Shannon made the motion up.
No, no.
That's okay, Betty.
Okay. Well, mine's off in another world. You have any questions, Mr. Shannon? Ms. Long?
No question.
Okay.
It was very complete, what they had to do, incredibly.
The, um, is Mr. Walters here tonight?
Yes, he is.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that.
I was, I was going to mention that.
Not that I want to talk to him, but I just noticed that he didn't make it to the planning commission meeting and I didn't, I don't know if the commissioners had any questions for him, but-
Not really.
Okay.
I think the curious one was where and how and why the containers showed up.
That's, I know the commissioners were concerned that they just showed up and even though he was aware that you couldn't.
I, I think we got that clarified.
Okay, that's, that's the key, so. Okay, I've got nothing further, so if nobody else has got anything further, I'll ask for a vote.
Long?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Motion passes.
On to item number five. Fitness Court Concrete Pad Installation. Staff?
Good evening, everyone. Justine Spees, Recreation Manager. Um, tonight I'm asking for the motion to accept the bid from Legacy Underground for the total of $34,500. This would be to install the concrete pad for the fitness court, um, off of Nettleton. Um, with this project, this was, uh, sent out to bid, we had two bids come back, um, Legacy Underground being the lower of the two. Um, we would need a budget amendment as this was not a previously budgeted for project for the 2023 budget period. Um, the total budget amendment that would need to be approved would be $35,500. Um, there are a couple of projects that, um, our department will not be completing this year to kind of offset those costs. Um, those being, um, the replacement of the freezer out at the aquatic park. Um, and we are delaying, let's pull this here, uh, also the replacement of the gym lights, those, that was already completed with the camp grant for $12,000. Um, and also $10,000 for replacement for the cottonwood flooring, that will be delayed a couple of years, um, for that replacement flooring. Um, but yes, the total budget amendment would be about 3,000, or $35,500 and 500, $35,500. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Thank you, Justine, appreciated. Uh, is there anybody from citizens who'd like to comment on this? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion. Don't speak all at once.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept the bid for the Fitness Court Concrete Pad from Legacy Underground for $34,500.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Reeves, Mr. Shannon and a second by Ms. Long. At least I didn't call you Ms. Wood, so. Discussion, Mr. Kip, anything?
Nothing.
Ms. Wood?
Nothing.
Ms. Long?
Nothing.
Nothing here, so with that then, vote.
Kip?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, on to item number six, Water One Contract Amendment Number One. Staff?
Good evening, Frank Abarth, Public Works Director. You folks are pushing me past my bedtime. Have before you here Water One Contract Amendment Number One. This is an amendment to a current contract and essentially it's adjusting the cost per thousand gallons, uh, up approximately a dollar forty-six per thousand gallons. This has to do with a connection with Water One, which is the only connection we have down at K7 and 43rd down there. And primarily this connection is for support down there in the event that we either have a main break down there or we have a significant fire event or some other issue that takes place down there. This will provide us that supporting connection, uh, so that we have water down there. Gets used very seldom. Uh, in fact, I noted in 2022, we didn't spend a dime down there, uh, however, we did test it at least twice last year. So I know we're running water through it, but apparently we didn't run a thousand gallons through it, uh, just to make sure that it works. Staff, Public Works recommends approval and be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Uh, do residents who would like to speak on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve Contract Amending Amendment Number One with Water One for Emergency Water Access and Water Sales to the City of Bonner Springs.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Reeves, a second by Mr. Shannon. Uh, we'll start down, let's start with you again, Mrs. Wood.
I don't have any questions. It sounds like you better have it.
Mr. Kip?
Is that right off that five-foot diameter water line?
No. No, this is off, this is a 12-inch connection down there that comes underneath K7 over to our connection.
Okay, but over there someplace, there is a big water line that goes through.
Yeah, it'd be to the east of there, yeah. It runs kind of east of our current water plant actually and goes underneath the river.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Shannon? I've got nothing else to add as well, so with that then, call, vote please.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, on to item number seven, the water treatment plant KDHE loan and loan forgiveness for a non-loan. Okay, on to item number seven, the Water Treatment Plant KDHE Loan and Loan Forgiveness for a Non-L loan.
Yes, I'm sure you're delighted, as I am, to have this keep coming back here. But this is actually the agreement part of this, where, you know, I think it might be the last time that I have to come here, but I'm not sure. Yeah, on this particular item. So this is a $2.5 million loan that's really not a loan. It has to do with the process that we have to go through KDHE in order to get the loan forgiveness portion of this emerging contaminant that we have in our groundwater, manganese. So this $2.5 million will help offset the cost of the equipment that it takes in our new plant to treat and remove the manganese. And it is a loan forgiveness, which I guess in itself says you have to take a loan first. But it is incredibly confusing, and I still have to provide a whole bunch of information to our city attorney so that he can sign off on this. I spent some time on the phone with him last Friday afternoon, trying to explain to him that this is... Yeah, I know it says it's a loan, but it's not a loan. So with that, I think I'll just stop because I'm tired, and, you know, I don't know that I could ever get it right.
Is this a pyramid scheme?
We've been through this so many times, and I think maybe we're finally at the point for the agreement. This is the agreement, but maybe there'll be one more that says that, do we really mean it? I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Abart. Any residents that would like to speak on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the loan agreement for KDHE for the project number 3155 in the amount of $2.5 million.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Shannon and a second by Ms. Long. Discussion, we'll start with you, Mr. Reeves.
No questions here.
Ms. Long?
No question.
It's making us healthier, right?
Yeah.
So, yes, go get that loan and pay it off right away. With that, vote, please.
Long?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
On to item number eight. We're getting there, guys, we're almost done. Water, the Water Meter Endpoint Project.
Good evening.
I'm guessing that's you, Mr. Abart.
This will probably generate a little bit more discussion, and that's okay. We need to have it. So as you've read in the background here, January 21st, 2022, a little over a year ago, we came before you gave a presentation, actually, I think we gave more than one, about this endpoint project. Everybody agrees, get the new meters, update the meters. Most of them are hitting in that 20-year range, now they needed to be replaced anyway. So we went with the modern meters. The meters are not the issue. There is the connection that reads those things via cellphone. We approved a process. Those actually worked up until December 22nd, 2022. We got an interesting little Christmas present where our connection site just went dark. And, long story short, as we followed up, that company who was providing that service to us had locked their doors and walked away and essentially filed for bankruptcy. So fortunately, we weren't into the entire project. We were at 991 endpoints of the 3,110 roughly that we have in our system. So, but that still demonstrates what I'm characterizing as an unrecoverable loss from that vendor at about $131,803. So I don't think a settlement has been made on legal action as to whether we're going to pursue that or not. But in the meantime, we're saddled with having to essentially read at each location in person over 860 of these meters, which, as you can imagine, is wrought with human error just about every step in the way. As someone reads it, someone has to write it down. Someone has to transfer it to a computer someplace. There's just all kinds of steps in there where there's room for human error, and there has been. But we've needed to spend the last several months to figure out where we could go from here. So that's what brings me here tonight. We've evaluated, this technology works. It was working until they shut it off. We'd like to continue with this technology because our second choice is kind of an old technology, but it's still in use in quite a few areas. But it's setting up your own radio system, essentially. You know, you'll probably see a lot of these on water towers around several towns, and they have their own radio repeaters and their own radio read instruments. And all of that costs money to put in place, and it also, it sticks you as the municipality responsible for maintaining all of that or replacing it and things like that. You don't have those issues with the cellphone technology. It's not perfect. I'm sure there's going to be problems with it. There always is. But as near as we can tell, that's the technology of choice. That's where everybody is headed on the East and West Coast, and that's what we'd like to stick with. You can see, we're going to dip into the water fund for $307,357 at this point in order to step back into this realm with another vendor. And I guess I'll stop there and answer any questions so that we can get discussion rolling.
Thank you, Mr. Abart. Just ask real quick if there's anybody, any of the citizens like to speak on this item at all? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion.
Make the motion to approve the agreement with innovating utility solutions for the acquisition of water meter endpoints and supporting software system in the amount of $763,000.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Kip and a second by Mr. Reeves. We'll start with you, Mr. Kip. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
It's going to keep us safer, right?
I don't know about safer. On to you, Mr. Reeves.
There's no chance that we can find somebody else that would be able to connect us with this previous software or previous system so that we could read those anyway?
Not that we could find. I mean, I could, I guess I could go into the whole thing about, you know, they should have contacted these vendors that we're dealing with, and they should have brought them on board. But that isn't what happened. And we know there's a total of 11 different entities that were impacted by this, one being us. And, so.
Just wonderful.
Mr. Abart, since, as you mentioned, there's 11 in there, is there any talk or any communication between all 11 where they do a class action lawsuit against this particular?
I was going to say, not to my knowledge, but I do know that our attorney is going to or has talked to the entity that's very close to us. Beyond that, I don't know that I should say much beyond that. But, yeah, there's an entity to the north of us that.
We are working.
In fact, I think they just went to this same vendor and had theirs installed, I believe it was May 6th. So their system is up and running already.
And then with these, we're talking about having to actually replace the water meter?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, the meters will work with this. This is just that little cap thing that actually sends and receives a signal.
They have to replace that.
Right, it's plug-and-play.
Gotcha.
Unplug one, unplug the one that won't work, plug in the one.
At least a lot of the work that has taken place won't be lost.
That's correct. The meters should not need changed.
Good. Okay. With any other questions, comments? If not, vote, please.
Wood?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Abart? Sorry for keeping you so late tonight.
Frank Abart, Public Works Director.
Oh, I haven't announced that since I'm in it.
Just for the record.
Lift Station Number Two, Design Bill Phase Two Agreement, number nine.
So as you know, we've been working on this project with Lift Station Two. We had a failure back about this time in 2022 over there where we had significant rainfall after we had commenced with an excavation to make a repair. As we moved to the next steps, we did a design-build process utilizing the people that we already had on board doing design-build at our water treatment plant, which burns McDonald and CAS. And we engaged them to do Phase One, which is a 30% design. They get it to a 30% design, and they can give you a solid price. And then they moved to Phase Two. Well, this is the Phase Two. So I'm before you with the Phase Two proposal in the amount of $3,861,31. And at this point, I believe the only thing that's missing is our anticipated contribution from our insurance carrier, which has not quite been ironed out yet at this time. So I believe there's some discussions about maybe tabling this. That might be my recommendation, I guess, at this point, as opposed to approval.
If you're done, then I will ask if there's any residents that would speak on this. If not, staff has recommended that we table the item until we get that last piece of documentation on insurance before moving on this item. So I would, if somebody would, I would like to entertain a motion to table this item until the May 22nd meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to table this until the May 22nd meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Shannon and a second by Mr. Reeves. It's a tabled item, so there's no discussion, so vote, please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abart. Now you can go home and take some Z's. And that brings us to our reports. So up first is Mr. Peterson, City Manager's Report.
All righty, I've got several things I'd like to go over. Actually, just three.
I hope you're saying that with a smile on your face.
The, we talked about this a little bit in our workshop session, but I do want to point out for everybody, the city did finalize about $1.7 million worth of tax credits, which in effect is revenue coming back to the city for the completion of this building. These were historic tax credits that were generated by the construction of this building for eligible items. We then worked through a process of selling those tax credits to a private entity as we're not able to utilize them very successfully. Got that at about 95 cents on the dollar, which is quite phenomenal as far as that process is concerned. So that has been finalized, and the check has been received. Along with this building, I do want to point out the city was awarded the Medallion Award from the Kansas Preservation Alliance, which is a great award from a state association, just again highlighting this building and its significance as far as being preserved. And then also, much to his chagrin, I'm sure, I do want to note the attendance of our new fire chief. Mr. Richards is here this evening. I'm sure he didn't expect this long of a meeting, but nevertheless, is glad he's here. He's a great addition to the organization, but also the community. Brings a great deal of experience, a great deal of respect, and looking forward to all the things that he's going to help with the fire department and the city generally. So that is all I have this evening.
Okay, on to City Council item, we'll start right down there with you, Mr. Shannon. Anything to add this evening? Ms. Long?
Thank you all for making things work.
Mr. Kip? And both myself and the mayor's report, it's what a wonderful evening. We'll see you in two weeks. Meeting adjourned.